And start the meeting with the first is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If anyone has a phone with them, please turn it to silent. The second thing I'd like is just to have a moment of silence for the people in London. You aren't aware there was a terrorist attack there today. And I'd just like to do that. By the grace of God, it didn't happen here. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up to audience comments. Do we have anybody that wanted to speak?
No, I do not have any audience cards.
All right. That brings us to... Well, it was on the agenda, so I just did it. There are specific items we're going to speak on. Somebody may want to talk about that. Do we have any idea where Tony is now? Can you text him and see if he can give us an ETA? Thank you. I'm gonna bypass 3A and go to 3B. Which is the approval of the bridge loan documents and adoption of the associated resolution.
Is David on the phone?
Hello, David? No.
Put out, isn't it, Warren?
Yes.
He's just not there yet.
Does, does he know he's supposed to dial in? This is great.
Can I ask a couple of questions during this?
Sure.
Is the loan agreement, is, I'm guessing this is the exhibit attachment to 2017-12? It's an attachment to, to find his exhibit A?
That's correct. There's an A, I think a B and a C in terms of exhibits you should have.
Okay, okay, they're all state and listed.
Yeah.
Is this essentially making corrections to what was done in error the first time where they did not consider us as a governmental entity?
Yeah.
Cleaning all that up, is that what this is?
Right, yeah. They have some what they call static forms that would not match up with governmental entities.
Hello?
So we had to do these exhibits and the loan modification page in order to correct them.
Hi, David. Hold on just a moment.
Okay, okay. And we're not ready for any of that, are we, anyway? Continuing, we've got a second part coming up. Danny's doing, I'm just here. Danny's doing the plans and specs on the other 13 eight ponds, eight ponds that we're going to do in November. What do we need to do to make sure that this? Are we going to go for another line of credit on that group? Or will we extend this one to where we don't have to do this again?
Well, that's part of why the bond validation is for the 12.5.
I understand that.
So that we don't have to do this. And theoretically, the state revolving loan would be able to...
So we don't have to have a line of credit?
Correct.
Okay.
So this would, this be a one-off?
Gotcha, gotcha.
Ed, what do you mean we didn't have to have a line of credit?
The reason we had to have the line of credit this time is because we weren't closing the loan timely. The loan ain't going to close until June or July, and these contractors want to get paid, so we had to have the line of credit.
I thought, yes, that's right. But I thought you said we didn't have to have a line of credit.
No, we do. My question was, do we have to have a line of credit? Next project, and as Stephen pointed out, we changed the number to 12.5 million. So the only thing that we have to have is verify that the SRF has enough money to get us from 4.4 to over 6 million, because I'm sure we're going to go beyond 6. To have that money available so that the next time we don't need a line of credit, we simply just go to the SRF on a monthly draw.
Yes, that's correct. That would be the goal, be just to increase the state revolving loan piece.
So we want, we want to make sure, Danny, you came in late on that. We just want to make sure that on these next eight ponds that we anticipate starting in November, that we've got all the money in place to be able to move right into those on a monthly pay down or drawdown from SRF.
Yeah, for the, for the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. The, the next eight are going to be a lot easier because DEP will have a public hearing in August. I think it's already set for August 10th. So as long as we get the documentation to them 45 days in advance of that, anything that happens after that date, that August 10th date, is reimbursable through that process. So we can begin the bidding, you know, August 11th. So that means we'll have nearly a full year this time to actually get that work done.
Which means we can give to the contractors a heck of a lot more time to do the work and probably get much better bids. But we've got a lot more work to do.
Yes. Well, we have more legs, but as far as linear footage goes, it's about, it's about the same.
About the same, that's right.
Madam Chairman, these, these two guys are getting way ahead of me.
I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's okay if you let me catch up. You're talking about what's going to happen in Section 2, if I may use that term. Is that so?
Part 2 of Phase 1.
Yeah.
All right, Part 2 of Phase 1. We still have a $6 million cap, do we not?
No. We have 6 million right now granted to us, of which we're going to tap 4.4 with this. We've got 13 more, eight more ponds coming to make the original 13. If you take the, the lineal foot, lineal footage that we have on this first five versus this next eight, it's about the same, as Danny just said. So if you just apply reason that they're going to be the same, then we're going to have another 4.4 million ballpark, maybe a little bit less. But we're going to pop 6 million, which means we're going to have to get the SRF obligation to us up from 6 million to maybe 8, 8.5 million.
I don't think you're going to do that.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think it's going to be as easy as what you guys are talking.
It will be. The, the process is, the process starts, the whole process starts with request for inclusion. And that's a, that's a form you fill out that basically describes a project. It gets it in the queue, if you will, and tells the DEP that this project is coming. You've already done a request for inclusion, and it's for $6 million right now, I believe.
That's the ceiling right now.
That's the ceiling right now. That's okay. The facilities plan defined a project. The facilities plan defined a price. That's okay as well. DEP understands that costs change, costs go up. What you have to do next is resubmit a revised request for inclusion, putting the higher dollar amount in there. Then when you go back for the next loan, they'll, they'll, they'll have already approved that request for inclusion, RFI as they call it, for that. It is as simple as that. They don't have to, they don't have to approve it. But if they have the dollars available, which I haven't seen in the last several years that they don't have the dollars available, it is, it is that simple. Yes. Yeah, and they, and they have, this is on the clean water side, and they have had, you know, strapped funds.
Hey, how about, can I ask, finish asking my question? When we adopted the fiscal '17 budget, we put an increase in the assessments in there that would provide for $6 million to do the funding on a $6 million loan. That's the cap. I am 90% sure that's our cap. And we're not going to get it increased until we increase the assessments for fiscal '18.
As far as the SRF is concerned, from that standpoint, they're not, I mean, you're going to obviously have to go through your budgeting process and work with your assessments, but they've never looked at, at your ability to, what you're charging your, your customers. Now, some grants and some loans do go through that process, but I think we went through that initially with, with this. But you don't have to go through that process again.
But you are correct.
Yes.
6 million is what's capped off in your budget. But keep in mind, you're going to be going through your budget process before you, you know, you're going to be starting out before you...
Thank you so very much. Now, you guys just kind of skipped step 3 and 4.
You're right, you're absolutely right.
Give me one second. Tony and David, are you both there? Hello?
I don't know if Tony's around, but I'm...
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to let you know we're on the bridge loan documents and adoption of that associated resolution. So in essence, 3B.
Thank you, yes, I'm, I'll call 921, I'm Daniel Parkwell. Thank you.
Okay.
What page is that on?
Did either one of you have anything you wanted to add to this conversation?
I have one thing, Madam Chairman. Excuse me.
Go ahead. Was it Tony or David?
Oh, I was waiting for Mr. Guy, I think he made the...
Oh, yes. Madam Chairman, when, at our, at our last meeting or the one before that, when we received the bids for the five ponds and the associated expenses, 4.4 was the number at that time. But subsequently, our engineer slash overseer reduced from the 150 to 90,000 what we're going to be charged for overseeing the construction. Is that not so?
Bill, there's two issues on that. Keep in mind, when you're doing these, you're doing them based on estimates. At the time we were doing it, it was an estimate, then we got a bid, and we put together what we call a post-bid breakdown.
Yes.
We included in that post-bid breakdown the latest information that we had at that time, based upon contracts of our vendors that are going to be doing the non-construction cost work. We also put in, you recall, a 10% contingency. So to answer your question, yeah, we probably have $150,000, $180,000 afloat in that 4.4 million that if the engineering services for inspection, which you're referring to, would come in as we have projected, which is about 60,000 less. And if the construction work comes in, such as the construction contingency of 10% is not needed, we could end up with upwards of $200,000 left over going forward. Which is always good news. You just don't want to be low bidder on this and have a change order and not have enough money to cover all the costs. But I think we have a very good, accurate resolution of what we project the costs to be, and we're on the safe side.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Flaherty?
Yes. Mr. Nelson, I have a question for you. Okay. Our motion so far is only for 6 million. We have never motioned for more than 6 million. Is this, this, that is correct?
I assume.
Okay, so we don't have a motion for more than 6.
Well, you're...
So we have to assume the cap is at 6, like Mr., like Supervisor Guy said. And until we make a different motion, that's where we're at.
And that's, that's fine. I mean, we're just talking about this bridge loan today anyhow, so...
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, what Bill was, was talking to, there's, there's two mutually exclusive conversations or trains of thought. One is the SRF funding and the ability to obtain more money in the event that it's needed, which if we continue to move forward, it would be. But then the other train of thought or the, is areas, would the board approve the direction to go above what we have existing for, for Phase 2? So they're mutually exclusive. We have to approve and vote to move forward to expand that dollar amount. The other is, will the SRF funding process allow us to, to expand from the 6 million that we have today?
But what we're...
It's a little bit more complicated than that. We did approve a loan validation for 12.5 million so that we don't have to do that again. So to answer your question, we have taken action to move as high as 12.5. We have not taken action to go to SRF to ask for an increase or, like Danny said, an amended inclusion to go above 6. That's where we're at.
Yeah.
But today what we're talking about is the bridge loan that gets us...
Yes.
Started doing the work before we actually had the SRF funds.
This is the Band-Aid.
So, again, I'll ask it, Tony or David, did you have anything to add here?
Yes, if I may, and David, if you want to jump in ahead.
Go ahead, Tony.
Pardon? Pardon?
I said, go ahead.
Hello?
Tony?
Hello?
Yeah.
David said to go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I know, I'm starting anything, it's 7:11. Yeah, companies agenda, and I appreciate y'all's involvement. First of all, there has been a tremendous amount of work performed since, well, last Thursday around 4:30, 1 o'clock is when we received the packet of loan documents from Center State Bank. And since that time, Friday, over the weekend, yesterday, and Monday, we have all been working feverishly to get the documents in the format that's appropriate for a governmental bond. Center State has been tremendous to work with, the loan officer and their attorney. And even when their attorney has a personal family member that has redirected his attention, they've been terrific to work with. And Stephen's been a good liaison with them. And what you have in front of you, the reason why we wanted to have this resolution was that there is a governmental certificate document. And a lot of the documents that Center State provided are what are called pre-plussed form of form documents. And easier many times as opposed to them reading the tax encyclopætics of the form documents to do a modification document that modifies certain aspects of their form document. And since the governmental certificate talked about a resolution, or at a duly held meeting, and with some other considerations, we have prepared the resolution 2017-12 and the four exhibits. That, it follows up on the prior resolution that y'all authorized with regards to executing documents in conjunction with the Center State loan. It's basically supplement and adds to additional authorization from our prior 2017-08. An attach to the resolution is the Form Promissory Note, the Form Governmental Certificate, a revised loan agreement that was substantially revised from that first provided, and well as a modification agreement. If I may, the promissory note and governmental certificate, the many terms that we believed need to be revised were revised in that document called Modification of Documents. There are separate subsections that address each of those documents, the governmental certificate and the promissory note and the loan agreement. Then we have the loan agreement that was revised substantially to tailor it more towards a governmental entity. There are two more items. I spoke with the bank's counsel this morning briefly, and he had four questions and two remaining requests. And two of those requests are that we name the registrar and who's going to register the note. And we've had communications, we've all decided to bless Stephen Blum with that opportunity. And the second one was a question with regards to, oh, gosh. It'll come to me in a second. He also asked a question about the amortization. I had a 20-year amortization, well, we don't. I told him that we talked to SRF already on a 5-year amortization, push came to shove. And he wanted, oh, I know what it was. Wanted the tax opinion letter that is tax exempt to, that the first draw from the loan, the contingent of hundred received of that. We've already talked and coordinated that with our bond counsel. And so the, this resolution 2017-12, you've had, we've had, again, a number of... The volume of emails over the last three business days has been phenomenal to achieve this. And this is in good order for us to finalize this loan transaction with Center State Bank. There are some tax compliance documents, because this is a tax exempt issuance. And there is sufficient language in the resolution in Section 7 that authorizes the board, officers of the district, and agents and employees authorize and directed to do all such acts and things, execute all such documents necessary for the closing of this transaction. These are typical form tax compliance documents. And the bank is acceptable to the bank. And again, they've been tremendous work with Bill Daniels, the loan officer, and Brian Lepshie, their attorney. And our recommendations for the board to adopt the resolution 2017-12 and therefore authorize execution of all the attached documents and the tax compliance certificates. David, did I miss anything?
I, I, I don't think so. I just wanted, wanted to say, is to tell Stephen that the requirement for the registrar is required by the tax code for the bonds to be taxed, yeah. The government and all of its incentive and wisdom decided that they didn't want bearer bonds available in the tax exempt market. And so we needed to have a registrar. And in a bond deal, it's typically done by the trustee bank. Here we don't have a trustee in, on this part of the transaction. And so we're just saying that the, that the district internally will maintain its registrar, its register of holders, and it's going to have one name on it.
And we volunteered Stephen for that.
Yes.
And he did not say no, so obviously he didn't say yes.
Having not been on that call.
He didn't win.
The other reason, you're not, you're not being on that call.
Marty, do you want a motion made for, and seconded to just open this for discussion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2017-12 and Exhibits A, B, and C attached as loan agreement.
And D.
And D, I'm sorry. And D.
I'll second it for discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Guy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Tony, I don't see an arbitrage certificate in here of any kind.
That's an attached compliance certificate documents. The arbitrage certificate is in there.
It's not called an arbitrage certificate anymore?
Well, it's in, it's in the separate side of documents. The tax compliance documents and tax compliance certificates require that. That we have to do that arbitrage...
Mr. Guy, we take our orders on how to, what to label these documents from our tax attorneys up in Cleveland.
Well, they're, they're not always right.
What, the ones in Cleveland or the ones in Tampa?
I was just trying to get some levity out of here. Okay, all right, you've got that, that covered, thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, a question. I want to make sure I got the logistics of how this is going to work. I think I have it, but I want to make sure. We're going to take and use this line of credit. We're going to have contractors, five contractors turning, or two contractors turning in five invoices for five ponds. We're then going to put those in some type of a schedule to take to the bank to pay on a monthly basis. And then we're going to keep logging those until we close the loan. When we close that loan, Danny, is the money from...
Close the loan with SRF.
With SRF, yes. Close the loan with SRF. When we close the loan with the SRF, will we take all of those schedules that have been paid for by the bank under the interim line of credit? Will then SRF send the check to us, and then we write a separate check to the bank?
Yes.
Or do they send it directly to the bank?
Their agreement's with you.
That's what I thought. So we need to have an account, a construction account, to where that money that comes in, whatever we order, is one of the same with what goes out to the bank to reimburse or check's paid.
And that's it, that's at the district's discretion. I mean, when you get that, you don't have to do disbursements monthly, as you know. I mean, my recommendation is, especially since you have five contracts, but you may, if you want to do it every other month, that money is there, so it's just a matter of...
What do you mean, do what every other?
The, the disbursements, to get the reimbursement back from, from DEP. You don't have to do that monthly, but...
But, but we still have to pay the contractor?
Yeah, you, you would go through the same process that you normally would. Contractor Smith's pay request, you've got your 30 days by law, whatever it is to do that.
I just wanted to make sure that the SRF is not going to pay the...
No, it comes straight to us, because...
If you notice, and that's a good question, Mr. Tinkell. When we did the loan agreement in the Pledge of Pledged Funds, it's paragraph 4, "The pledged funds of revenues received in non-adborne special assistance levy to get to property specially benefited by the project, the fund that will support late banks restoration of property or non-adborne special assistance levy by the district for repayment of loan, and the SRF loan proceeds dispersed to follow by DEP." So the money would come, and that's the pledge. We pledged those funds, and yes, the understanding is like Danny mentioned, you mentioned. We would be reimbursed and would pay Center State.
Okay. Stephen, we have put into the budget for 2017 the equivalent of the 20-year amortization of $6 million, 350,000, 360,000, whatever that was. That's in that account right now. Or in our budget.
That's correct.
It, it's, it's obvious that we are not going to hit that number. We're going to be starting in another week, and then we're going to be doing invoices. And if everything goes hunky-dory, 90 days, 120 days from today, we'll be done with this project to the tune of somewhere around 4.4 million. Which means we will not have used all that principal interest on this $6 million. What happens with that? Does that just carry over to the next?
It will be carried over. You know, and that's why we separated, we have a separate fund for all of that money, so you'll be able to see what the balance is, you know, every month.
So we could carry it over to match whatever we need to do next year on whether we go to 4.4 to 6 million, 8 million, whatever, whatever the number is.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
No.
Ready to speak, Madam Chairman?
You're good.
I want more time to read it.
Oh, okay.
I'm not finished reading. I have a few more minutes to finish reading. I'm not, I guess I don't read as fast as you do.
Marty, you might ask a question.
Did anyone have a comment on this item? Seeing none.
Well, Ms. Flaherty agreed on this transformation purposes. The, we may, if we want to, if we were hoping today to be able to have board also proof, according to the engineers report and the assessment methodology report, purposes of scheduling the hearing, we're not going to have that. But I have hard copies I've handed out, some of the documents today. We, again, we've been, we're still in the draft stage as to those documents.
Now, those, those documents, the absence of those do not impact any of this?
That's absolutely correct.
And give us the ability to still issue those proceedings?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. But I have hard copies, I'll just hand those out now and not have any discussion. But this is draft only, please understand.
I'm sorry, Tony, what are these about?
It's the engineers report for the bond validation. And the, and these are draft, in stamp draft, either draft, like the master assessment methodology report.
I don't want one.
Okay. I have two of the, I have two master assessment methodology reports, and Mr. Tinkell, and the engineers report. I'll give them to Mr. Tinkell, if anybody else wants to. It's a draft and subject to revision and change by, internally by the staff. And we're not going to be able to do this today.
Yeah, I'd like a hard copy.
Okay.
I hate reading on the...
I agree. And so it puts us back two weeks. I didn't have any... Well, I have the next, one more copy of the engineering report, but not the assessment methodology. So it pushes back two weeks the timeframe in which the board can set the hearing to finalize the assessments. After we have the initial hearing, we can then, you know, can file for the validation.
All for the validation.
Yeah. Hey, David?
Yes.
And from a calendar perspective, assuming for safety discussion on April 6th, the board adopts the preliminary assessment report and the engineers report and schedules the hearing on the final adoption of the assessments. And I didn't have a chance to double-check the statute. Were you able to sort of get a calendar out for that?
Yeah, put the timeline...
It's 30 days, 30... All of the residents will get, will get a mailing of the notice of hearing. And they've got 30 days, and they've got to get 30 days' notice, I think. I think it's 30, it may be 31.
I think it's 30.
I'm pretty sure it's 30 days' notice. So we're talking about what May, May 6 would be the earliest. Presuming the meeting is the evening of the 6th, the notices probably will not go out until the 7th. the evening of the 6th, the notices probably will not go out until the 7th.
So we can have a discussion today?
And maybe want to give yourself an extra day there, give yourself, you know, plan of getting it out the 8th.
We're not doing this one.
Okay. So what the board...
I don't know, we'll find out.
Yeah, I think, so between now and the board meeting of April 6th, the board members can, our first meeting in May, is it May 4th? We would, I would suggest we have the hearing, I mean, the hearing on the final subject being made on 11th, you know, a special meeting just for that, because also we may have a number of people here just for that item. So between now and April 6th, if the board members can check their calendars for May 11th, because we also do a publication in the newspaper, as well as the mail notices to the individual who will be assessed for this project.
It's the second Thursday of May.
Yes, May 11th. So if you look between now and April 6th, look at that as being the beginning of the hearing. Yes, Mr. Guy, you sort of frowning at me?
I am frowning at you, or I'm just frowning in general.
Okay.
Why do the assessments that we set for fiscal '17 back in whatever it was, last August, not cover this? What is this special assessment about that you're talking?
Well, even though we had... Go ahead, David.
I was going to say, the assessments back as part of your budget for us, were O&M assessments, and they were only covering one year worth of cost. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but what this is, is, I mean, what we're really doing is incurring long-term debt, and what we're doing is converting it into an assessment per lot, so that there's a fixed amount of long-term debt, and there's an interest component that would be paid on an annual basis for the 20 years. So it's a little bit of apples and oranges, even though ultimately both assessments were going towards financing the lake improvements. I mean...
So you're telling me that the original assessment was what we used to call annual appropriations, restricted annual appropriations, and this is for a 20-year appropriation?
This is a 20-year debt, just like the debt the district put on for putting in roads and other improvements back in the 90s and early 2000s.
And it says there's a 20-year period as opposed, and once again, establishes that it's a 20-year payment program as opposed to the annual, I think that...
And then, and what's...
But a resident can prepay.
And what's the amount of this going to be?
The idea is to validate the full 12.5 million, but it gives the flexibility to issue that debt up to that amount, but doesn't mean the board will issue the debt up to that amount.
I don't think I want to be present at that meeting.
I understand. But again, the actual debt that's levy will be the amount of debt that's issued.
Billy, you're doing the same thing in Pelican Reserve. The only difference is you've got a different funder.
We've got, it's totally different. Don't go there. We haven't, we haven't done, we haven't done a job of bringing our residents up to speed as to what we're doing, and I think we're going to have to do that.
Go ahead, Kat.
I thought the $64 increase that was in the, our taxes, was for every year for the loan. That was the impression that was given when we, when the budget was presented last year.
It is.
That's right, but that's subject to annual appropriate.
Yeah, the thing is, if you're...
I don't think the...
Your O&M assessments are annual assessments based on what your need is to the coming year. And so you may have told everybody that there's a new increment going into that, that number, whatever that number is. I mean, that O&M assessment picks up in addition to that one-year assessment for the lake ponds, it picks up, what, cutting the grass, turning on the lights, keeping the swimming pool full, I mean, all of the things that you guys do as a governmental entity.
It was, the $64 was told, that that was an increase for the pond's restoration fund. That was what we were, that was what the public was told.
And that's exactly correct, and if we...
I mean, it's just like the $128 a year I pay for stormwater improvements that I'll be damned if I've seen yet.
If we take that $6 million and go to the 12th, or the 12 and a half, we'll just have another line item on the budget for the second component of the SRF loan, which will be somewhere in the neighborhood of another $65, $70 to take it from 6 to 12. It's that simple. It's that simple.
But I don't think the residents know that.
That was the point I was just trying to make.
Again, it all depends on the amount that's actually borrowed.
Right.
But...
So May 11th, is this a magic date? Because we have at least one supervisor that can't make it on that day.
The critical thing about that date is, is that until this happens, that SRF, the issue, as I understand it, we can't accept that SRF loan on a 20-year payment schedule until that happens. So we can't go past that date very much, or otherwise we're going to get into never, never land, and be paying a lot of money on that line of credit interest.
And Tony, why are we doing it on the 11th as opposed to the 4th, the regular schedule?
We wouldn't have enough time after April 6th, because we need at least 30 days' notice to the...
Okay, so it just falls in the...
Available to 10.
You mean 11?
Yeah, I can...
No, she can't make it on the 11th.
As long as we're out by 5, I can make it on the 11th if we come in at 3.
Can you make it in 3, on the 11th, May 11th?
I mean, as of right now, I can. That's a little far out.
3 o'clock's fine with me.
May 11th?
On May 11th, yeah.
So I think where there's clarity that needs to take place is, we have, we have approved the SRF to go to 12, but we haven't necessarily, we haven't approved the expenditure...
No, we haven't approved the SRF to go to 12. What we, we haven't yet done, the purpose of the resolution on April 6th will be to adopt the preliminary assessment methodology and the engineers report predicated upon a $12.5 million project cost, and to then utilize that to have a public hearing to say, this is the maximum exposure each property has, assuming the full 12.5 million is expended. And so, over the 20-year, here's a maximum dollar mark, and here's an annualized amount over 20 years for each parcel that's benefited by the project. And if, again, if you don't spend, borrow more than, if you borrow less than 12.5, then that assessment amount is less.
Correct.
And the idea is to validate the SRF loan funding, whether it's $6 million, or $8 million, or $9 million, up to 12 and a half total for the project, you may not be...
Correct.
Does that make sense, Mr. Guy?
Yes, but I want to repeat that I think we've done a lousy job of telling our residents what's, what's in their future.
I disagree with that. We've had public meetings, and I know everybody in Gateway Greens is very well aware of the fact that you've had about a $60-some, $64, $65 increase to cover the principal and interest on a $6 million loan, and there are going to be more $6 million followed to get all the lakes in this community fixed. It's that simple.
I think maybe the, maybe the response for that is, if, Bill, you think that there's a communication gap, how do we solve for that? So is there, and I think our website would be a great, now that we've got a great new website, I think we need to probably include an article or something that explains to the residents that, you know, this is a project that has been ongoing for some time, here's the reason why the cost has exceeded our original estimate, and here's what we're doing to, you know, continue the project, how it will impact the residents over time, and just really lay it out in as simple as terms as we possibly can.
I think it's an excellent idea. What I'd suggest is, is that David and I work with April and Chris to generate that in plain English format.
Yeah.
So that, assuming that on April 6th, the board adopts the resolution, adopt the preliminary assessment, say the final, the public hearing, before the formal notices go out, those formal notices are cold or the ice, they really are.
Yeah.
That there be something that goes out on the website.
Yeah.
Explaining, and says, here's what you will be getting, you know, we have this legal technical language, we have to utilize, here's the real-world practical impact of it, if we improve it.
What this means.
Right.
So that's a, that's a communication plan that you can, you can work with, with April and staff on, here's the, here's the delivery timelines for the various...
Yeah, you're getting a notice saying your debt, if we adopt this, will be X, but here's, it's predicated upon, assuming A, B, and C, here's what turns out to be an annualized basis, et cetera.
And this is going to be...
David, is that fair, Stephen?
Yes.
And this is going to be a long-term project, this is...
We said that a long time ago.
And I think, I think a lot of people do know that, but they probably need to be reminded of it, which is a good thing.
I think your bigger picture here is for a lot of the people, is that they see a lot of money being expended for which they're paying an assessment, but they haven't got to the head of the line yet. Their pond hasn't been addressed.
Right.
And the only way you're going to explain that is just to show all 64 ponds...
What's the progression?
Progression.
And why?
And what those costs are, and why, and it's going to be a staggering number. But we've known that since day one. I said a long time ago that it was going to be a big number.
And we hadn't done any work for years, so we're playing huge catch-up.
Well, and I think, I think everyone on this board would be of the stance that no one wants to raise taxes, and some of the dollars that we're looking at can be a little hard to swallow at times. But this is something that is, I mean, really critical to, to our community on, on multiple levels, and now that we're, that we're progressing, we're just going to have to absorb some of the increases. There's not a whole lot we can do about it, except make sure that we're physically responsible, that we're managing the district on, in every aspect of, of what we do, to not necessarily offset that cost, but make sure that the residents know that we're very diligent in how we're managing this district.
This, this points out, more than anything, the reason that we need to be on top of 13 ponds in Hampton Park to make sure this doesn't happen again, that 64 goes to 77. We need to have those 13 ponds in good shape to where those don't have to come up and be a part of this procedure going forward.
I agree with that. Any other discussion before I call the vote?
You know, I'm not going to be here on April 6th.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
I just wanted to, I didn't want any, any surprises.
I do remember you telling me that, I have it in my notes.
Tony, the additional assessments, certificates, and all that business, is going to be based on what dollar amount?
The assessment report and the allocation of the amount predicated upon $12.5 million, that's a maximum number allocated over the benefit of the property. The actual dollar amount of assessment that we live in each parcel that will show up on the tax bill will be based upon how much money is actually borrowed. So, and that gets back to explaining, just a real quick, I don't, this is a rough draft, as I said, this report, just picking out, and I've not had a chance to read it, I don't know, Danny, if you had yet really, the indication, where every folio, number for every parcel in areas 1 and 2 of Gateway, that will have an assessment poses listed here. So Russ Wire has done a heck of a job in a short period of time, and Stephen, thank you for providing the document.
Yeah, but you're, that's not my question.
It's like $2,024, roughly, over 20 years, so that's like $101 a year of the...
But that, but that's based on the...
Full 12.5.
$12.5 being, being borrowed.
Yes.
If, on the other hand, you say, you know, that the contingency money isn't needed in it, and you only borrow $12 million rather than $12.5, obviously the assessment, the property owner's repaying will be less.
The first $6 million equates to $780,000, Bill.
I think we're asking for a barrel of trouble. A barrel of trouble. We, we told our residents less than a year ago that the $64...
I guess the question is, if we only borrow and spend $6 million, then that number's probably going to be pretty, I mean, second down substantially.
Yeah.
That, that $100 a year, based upon the $12.5, would come down probably to half. I'm not the math guy. If you only borrow 6, so we're talking $55.
But then we're non-compliance with South Florida Water Management District. We have no choice.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
I know, I know, it sounds like a lot of money, but you can't do 5 ponds or 13 ponds and then say, well, the rest of you, you get to pay for these 13, but we're not fixing yours.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephen.
I understand that.
It was a $64 increase predicated solely on a $6 million amortized over 20?
That's correct.
That's correct. I checked those numbers there.
So I guess that's a question for the board. If the board wants to expend more than $6 million, then it would be a greater amount assessed.
But the $12.5 that we worked on a few meetings ago was, to my way of thinking, just done to make things easier for ourselves in the future.
Correct.
Yes.
Voyage the bond validation again.
You don't have to do a second validation. You validated 12.5 once, whether you use 4 million, whether you use 10 million, whether you use 8 million, it's all within the 12.5. And only the amount actually borrowed is the amount that will be showing up on the tax bill per parcel. Correct, David?
Yes.
So the only...
I mean, if you read, if you, if you read the draft report, assessment methodology report, it's paid, is Russ on the line? And he can probably point you to where...
No, he's not.
Oh, okay. But, but he has language in there that says that, that the assessments will come back to the board for approval, once we know how much debt we're putting on. So what we're doing is doing, we've got a cap amount for the improvements, and as long as we come in under that, we go ahead.
Another way...
Only if we have, I don't suppose having to go over the 12 and a half million, then I think that the district finds itself in a pickle, but then it's going to have to go back and do another validation.
That's what I was going to say. And when we get into phase two, up to around 30 ponds, you're going to be bumping that 12 and a half to probably be doing this again, and that probably be in 2019, 2020, very easily.
Ms. Kat?
Doesn't this have to go to a vote for, to the people?
No, it does not.
No.
And the reason why is, South Florida would come back and say, you're not going to have a vote to tell us what our rules, our regulations are. You don't have bureaucracy on that.
I mean, to piggyback on what he just said, South Florida Water Management is going to come and tell us we have to do this. I mean, we have to be in compliance, and the lake banks right now are not in compliance. So this isn't something that we have a choice on, we have to do it. It's been kicked down the road over and over and over and over again, and now we have to take care of it.
But I mean, the people were, the residents were told that $64 was going to cover it, and that was the only fee that we would have to pay for that loan, and now you're going to come back and tell them it's more. And that, that to me is totally wrong. I mean, that's like misleading them.
We never said that. What was said is that $6 million was the estimate for phase one. That's all.
That is exactly true, and I don't, I don't think we ever, I think we made it clear that this was just the beginning.
I made a presentation to this board a year and a half ago and tell you, you're going to touch it for 16 million, and I wish my number was going to be right. I think you're going to pop, go well past 16 million, if the numbers we receive to date are any indication.
Any other comment before I call the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now, I'm going to go back to Severn-Trent Contract Amendment, which is 3A, which we also have in front of us.
I'm going to drop off the phone if it's...
Thank you.
Thanks, Kat.
And I think they pulled apart a, are the five, so they pull, we need to make a correction.
Yes. The date's still in line.
That's what, that's what I was, I have circled, I highlighted that, as March 1st.
Why can't we take this up at the April meeting? Because I'm not at chance to read this.
See, what is different from the last draft that everybody has sent? Because the reason is, is the Severn-Trent contract that they were working under ends March 31st. March 31st. And that was the question that I asked.
Give them a five-day extension.
The, I didn't bring the redlined version, wouldn't, to go through, but most of the changes they have requested, the deletions were put back in. And we, we had some discussion about insurance. I'm not sure, again, I don't have the redlined version, I'm not sure I can go through the entire document, online book.
So I would, April, April White, Business Manager, I would imagine between the three of us, I mean, I think the significant changes was, we threw out the audit issue because the contract expires while the, while they're still wrapping up the prior year audit. And so I had suggested that we put a blurb in there to make sure that they are obligated to complete the audit, even though if, in the event that we go out to bid and we end up switching accounting firms, to be sure that they had the obligation to finish up what, what they had going with the auditors. And then that turned into a larger paragraph about some termination clauses. And then we just kind of reeled it back and said, okay, well, what is the reality of us ever having to exercise that? And we all agreed internally that we would just leave that paragraph out. And then we also addressed the insurance coverages. We went back and forth on that and I think we finally agreed that we would just pretty much leave it as is. I think we increased the umbrella.
Yeah, we modified it, but it's payable to the district.
Right.
And then we also, they wanted to take out the indemnification language, we're back in, that had requested so.
So nothing contextual changed since you've seen the, the contract last?
I had made a recommendation, boy, I wasn't ready to go over this, but I was going to ask when we had some exhibits that we wanted either referenced or attached. I, where, where is that?
There's, there's the, there's the back of this thing.
Well, I see these exhibits, but I was, I was thinking we were referring to some other exhibits.
No.
Is that it? This is it?
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, is it your intention to call for a vote on this today?
Without objection, I would like to, just because of the, the time, the timeframe that, April 1st, we'd like to have this in place, because their contract ends March 31st. So it would, it would serve us to execute this. You'd like a little bit of time to review it right now, that's fine.
I'd like that my other copy to be.
Yeah, it's, we're not, I'm not going to be able to review it.
Okay.
In the time that I normally would take. Let me just, may, I may...
Certainly.
Let me just ask this one question. Is, is this amendment totally in agreement with the amendments that we did to our fiscal year 17 budget?
Yes. Yes. This drops the contract down to the 67,005, I believe, and that was in Stephen's budget amendment. So all of those reductions for the contract and then on the top of that schedule of everything we added in the budget, it all netted down to that bottom line.
So it all is sheeted all together with this thing?
Yes, and that was this contract amount.
I'm prepared to vote for the contract.
What's the revision in Article 5, make it March 16th, which ties in with effective date?
Yeah, I just noticed that, that there was a conflict between, who knows?
By what? Should be March 16th.
Correct, which is on the first page, March 16th, so it should be Article 5.
Yeah, and I was just concerned because from ST's perspective, that's an operational issue as far as when we're going to make this effective. So I wanted to be sure that everything was in agreement. Stephen, you feel comfortable with the, with the 316?
I'm fine with 316. It doesn't, there's any problems with us.
Okay. One is...
On page four, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, Article 5.1.
Yes, this is March 16th. Go ahead and report here.
So it expires March 16th?
I don't like doing this, this is a little bit...
That's when this amendment will take effect.
No. This amendment expires March 16, 2018. If it's...
One year.
One year, so March 16, 2018.
But we're talking about the commencement date here in Article 5.1.
Which is the date of this, maybe, addition with you.
Yes.
But it says it's only effective for a period of one year.
Right.
So that means that would be the expiration date.
March 18.
Yes, March... 2018, yes.
Is there any issue with it being the, the effective date is 16th as opposed to the 22nd, which is today's date?
No.
No, no issue?
Make it effective as of December 16th. Margaret question on Steve or April. Has Amendment Number 3 been signed?
Three, yes.
Will you smile at Mark?
Yeah, we got that.
It has been signed.
Congratulations.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
Don't move, Madam Chairman.
Do I hear a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any other questions from anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And I believe that Item 3C is going to be delayed. It's not anything we can discuss today. Correct?
That was, that's the 2017 question.
Yes.
Yes, that would be the 2017 question.
That's the April 16th, on those two documents.
Yes.
Okay. Margaret question on Dave. Did you have a format by which you went by on this loan validation engineers report? Or did they, did the bond people give you a, a outline of a format?
No, we, we simply followed, yeah.
Okay. I've never done one before, I've never seen anything like this.
Any supervisor comments?
No.
Did I?
Yep, I have one. You can go first, I got to find mine.
I, I apologize. I just wanted to clarify for the record, because we have some documents to sign afterwards, to make sure that we're okay to execute the contractors' contracts now, that we've, that we've approved resolution 2017-12.
I hope we sure can.
Okay, because I have, I have those here, I just wanted to be sure that we were all on the same page.
Yeah.
I think there ought to be a motion onto that.
My understanding is that the bank is, is ready to sign these and, and see to make those two changes, don't you think?
I think DEP and somebody at Flor, at SRF is going to want to see a motion of this board authorizing approval of contracts and the issuance of a notice of receipt.
I think it's corporate.
Though we only did that.
No, we have not done that yet.
Well, I think it was, I think the contingent upon...
This.
The, it's, it's bridge line, yeah. So I think that takes care of it.
That wouldn't suffice.
Yeah. One, a little motion cannot have, never, can never have too many motions.
I, I want to play it safe. Make a motion that we are now in the position to have Margaret and/or whoever else needs to assign and attest the five contracts for the two contractors and issue the notice received for the phase one, five phase one projects.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Okay, any other supervisor comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I got a notice today that the next committee meeting for the high school is 4/5. There was a recommendation or a request from John Heck to have at least a board member and anyone else that we felt it hurtened. I know Chris attended, I think.
Kathy, you attended, didn't you?
Me and Kathy did.
Oh, you and Kathy attended.
Was this at the building committee?
Yeah, this is the, and I think from what I understand, this meeting on 4/5 will be the scoring meeting. Now, what that actually means...
I, I think what it's going to be is where they talk about the scoring and how to interpret it.
And in comparison, yeah.
Okay. So you planning on being there? You two, you planning on being there?
What, what day is that?
It's Wednesday.
4/5 is the Wednesday.
It's Wednesday.
Yeah, I think I did.
And it's at, it's at the same time?
Same place again.
Same place?
Yeah, I think so.
What time?
I'll double check that right now, make sure that you get it.
It happened, it does so.
Yep.
Elle said something out and for the life that I can't remember now what it was. It was something about a meeting coming up to, I guess, where the landscape committee is going to present their findings. This is the first I heard about this. Are we that far along?
No.
Or is this a public input session? What, what is this meeting?
No, sir.
Around the 10th of April?
April White, Business Manager, what we're trying to do right now, under the direction of the consultants, is we're trying to get a community-wide participant list on who's going to be interested more at the HOA level or the property management level for the different areas, like the buffer along Daniels and down the Gateway Boulevard corridor. We haven't reached into the residents yet. This is just kind of calling out to find who would be interested in participating in a planning meeting.
So you're looking for either...
We're looking for volunteers. That's going to be the fingers back into the residents and back into those commercial areas to make sure that they, they're communicated the information as we move through the process.
What, is the, is the architect going to make, you're going to get a billion different deals if, if you don't have a plan to show what you're tentatively doing to get them to have comments. I, I mean, you, you'll be going back to the drawing board. Some of them will come up with stuff you haven't even thought of.
Well, so far, phase one, Bill Pricey has received everything to complete phase one and so he has the, he has the inventory of everything laid out and he has some objectives from, from the plan. And so that's what that first meeting, once we get that participant list and we see how many we have, then we'll schedule a location and a time for that first planning meeting.
Can we, can we set some thresholds there that if it's one representative per HOA at, at a max, if there's an HOA that isn't represented?
53 HOAs. You're going to have a, what a heck of a lot of people there.
Well, I'm saying there's, you know, and if no one wants to be represented, what I don't want is three, you know, three individuals from one particular HOA, I think, you know, let's, let's put some, some parameters around that.
Okay, well, we didn't on the invite. The invite has already went out. To, to give you a status, so far we have six participants on the list today. The two-week reminder went out again to say, hey, we, we wanted some feedback by April 10th, I believe.
My HOA got one.
53 HOAs.
53 HOAs inside Gateway.
Yeah, so unless we just get like an overwhelming response over the next few weeks, I, I don't think we're, we're getting that of an, that overwhelming of a response so far.
I, I think if there was something that, to follow up to what Bill said earlier and Kathy said is, is that the facility planning and the lake bank restoration project may not be out on the street. I guarantee you, this isn't out on the street. People do not understand that we're talking about a plan to, to change and possibly radically change the look of Gateway.
So, which is, might be something that we look at April as far as, again, having something on our website for our 2017 initiatives or capital planning and then maybe just a little bit of description around those. Might be something to think about.
Supervisor, Flaherty?
Thank you, Chairman. I've already requested, April, that I attend the meeting because it was with the landscaping and I was on the landscaping committee and I know this, you know.
Any, any other supervisor comments? We're officially adjourned.
Chairman. I just got a email from the attorney for the bank. And so this is one thing we need to discuss with them and wrap up. The question was, what does the rate go to if it's deemed taxable? They want to go to the prime rate, if the loan is deemed taxable. It's tax exempt now.
What would ever be a reason that this would go taxable?
They want to have some assurance that it's taxable. Chairman Stephen, sorry?
No, no, I can't think of any reason what would make it taxable.
I can't either.
But, I mean, they just want to put something into the documents, you're saying?
The documents, they want to have something in there saying that if it is deemed taxable, it goes to the prime rate. Okay.
I don't see any exposure to it.
Okay. Thank you. We'll work with them on that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman, sorry.
Briefly.
I just have one quick question and I, I didn't get to jump in there when we were talking about the high school building meeting. We didn't really have collectively a, a position on that, but is that something, is that meeting something that you would like me to post to the website?
What meeting is this?
The high school construction committee meeting that we talked about on April 5th.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea.
That's fine, please.
Okay.
That's it?
That's all I want to know.
That's a good point, because Kathy and I have both been, we, we haven't talked at that meeting at all, but I could see where somebody might ask a question. And I don't know that at this point in time, we've had any discussion as to position of this CDD on this, other than here's our utilities, here's our benefits of having that site here. But she hasn't said it and I haven't said anything to indicate that the CDD is in favor of this or anything like that.
So you attended the last committee meeting, is that something that residents go to?
That was the site.